... called to honor the limits of planning board, okay, for September 17th, 2018. A first hearing, an open public meeting, for modification of a site plan, approval for research drive, process cooling.
Just for the record, Chris Serris with Hannigan Engineering here, have process cooling. This is for the, my name's Lieutenant John Gage, and so the proposed industrial building located off the end of Research Drive, just orientated associate of Research Drive, in the upper corner with the unbilled portion of the Melody Tribe. To, before the board back in, I believe, January and February of this year, under that approval, we fully leaving a common driveway access to provide access to the contents of certain projects in the north, and the proposed, uh, process cooling.
Process cooling.
Yep. Under that original approval, there was a, a split between the two parking areas, right about in the Charlie area, with access being provided to the loading area for the contents of stone, and to provide access to the process cooling loading area. During the pre-construction process, as the building's configuration is being finalized, and everything was starting to get rolling, concerns were raised by the applicant regarding truck traffic. Under the original proposal, the truck traffic would have turned into the proposed access to the process cooling site, and then drive through a series of parking areas. Because of concerns over trucks near the cars and whatnot, we proposed making a modification where it will allow the access drive to actually extend straight forward towards the rear of the property, and to allow loading areas through here. That way, we're completely separating both the pedestrian, day-to-day parking requirement activities, and the truck traffic, just helping separate and make everything flow a little bit smoothly. Because we did alter the location of the access drive and whatnot, grading and utility modifications were made. Under the original proposal, we proposed using a single underground storage system, due to concerns over operation and maintenance and whatnot. That system was abandoned, and its place, we're proposing to construct two detention basins, one near the rear loading area, and one near the front of the site, to provide stormwater compliance. The remaining utilities remain primarily unchanged, a few little tweaks here and there. Under the ordinance with finalized layout of the interior of the building, we're required to have 42 parking spaces, we're showing 89. The additional parking being for company vehicles, and various other trucks and vehicles they have in the site.
So, did you lose parking from the other plan? Or did you gain, or you lost it?
Yeah, I believe we gained a couple spaces.
Gained?
Under the original, we actually had parking up through here.
Yep.
The wall.
Where's the other one?
I don't have the information, sorry. But there was parking in the general area where the basin is now, walls and stuff. We've abandoned that, and we've just extended, because we're now able to reconfigure the parking, and shrink access traps and everything, we're able to fit whatever we lost here, along the entire length of the building.
Yep, okay.
So.
You're still well over?
We're very much over, almost double if you want.
Safer.
And safer, for isolating movement and truck movements and everything. So, ordinance requires 42, we're showing 89. And for the landscaping requirements, we're required to have 30 landscape trees, which we are showing interspersed throughout the entire parking areas. Snow storage, we've depicted a few areas along the bottom of the berm, and along the side of the road. We actually now have a large green space area between the access drive and the parking, so that will be also utilized for snow storage and large storm events, and then also additional areas located generally throughout the site, so should be very much compliant for that.
Are those labeled on the drawing?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the geologist of everything, if there's any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Okay. My first question is, if this is, this is not a minor modification.
Well, sorry, I'm late, 8:00.
That's all right.
Sorry about that.
We're going to get started on the man Carol, so.
All right, that's good.
Typically, a minor modification would be about four parking places, or a road here that doesn't interfere with your drainage, and new roads, and all the rest of that. I think, well, that's a determination we have to make. I'll let the board discuss that.
What else is the location of the building, and the primary parking areas, those haven't changed substantially, it's just primary access to the portions of the site.
Right. But I mean, you know, you add, what, 100-foot of road?
And two detention areas.
So, this wasn't the other form?
No. No, that whole section.
So, it's split right through.
And the stone drainage.
And this one.
And the grate.
And the grate.
And the grate. It's a stretch.
We have, we did review, submit the plans to DPW, so they had reviewed the drainage, and they made no comments regarding that.
Okay.
And we're currently in process of getting final signatures for the stormwater permits, and we'll get that also, we should, with conservation, or the stormwater authority.
Yeah, we started building.
They've cut in the road, they started placing a few structures here and there, primary along the main common area, but inside their foundation.
Yep. Okay.
Well, it's probably a better plan.
Oh, yeah, it definitely is, no question, it's a better plan, but.
But it's a minor modification.
It's not a minor one. I'm trying to think of what the process, way of the message, because we need, we need the input on the drainage from the DPW.
Oh, that's the difference.
No, we don't have that.
They have the department head.
So.
The only department that has comments is planned.
What difference does it make at this point, if we consider it a minor modification, or a, I mean, it's, it's scheduled.
DPW approves.
Comes down to the site plan change, and it's a.
But it's still, but it's still on for a public information meeting, that doesn't have to be published.
Yeah.
I mean, it's on.
It's on.
Right? Our butters don't have to be notified?
No.
Do we have department head comments?
Yes.
Yeah, we don't.
The only department with comments was ours.
Which was to extend the original permit requirements.
Yeah, covenant, just saying, let us just stormwater ordinance.
Yeah.
DPW approved it?
No, really.
Planning is saying there's a notation mistake on the plan, 89 to 81.
Yep. The building originally had 81 spaces, we altered it up to 89, so.
And then adhere to all conditions in the original plan.
Yeah.
So, all this.
Straightforward.
Wait, but I don't think it makes a difference, because the.
Probably not.
Point of determining if something was minor or major was, was just looking at it during a regular meeting, but we actually scheduled it for a public information meeting. And I recall that Hannigan Engineering had two, they had one that we looked at that night, and we just voted on it, then this one, he kind of conceded, in a way, that maybe just put it on the, just schedule it. But it's not, because, it's, it's a site plan, so it, it just needs to be scheduled for public information.
That's right, well, we scheduled it for public information.
So, I mean, it doesn't, I think we just voted, in the latest presentation.
Okay.
Yep.
So, but we should be into, hold on.
But, you know, where the conditions are, you know, all the new conditions noted at the plan events, plus the originals. What's the grading change? I mean, is it, is it major grading change for those detention basins?
Uh, no, the existing, these original parking areas were sitting around the 533, 534 mark.
Yep.
The berm for the basin is now sitting at 531, so it's actually shrunk down quite a bit.
So, where were the other basins?
There wasn't any, there was all underground storage.
Right, all underground.
All underground.
So, what? To make the road wider, and more, yeah.
Should we open this?
Hold on, so, so what's the total width on the, on the road going in? I mean, you add 100 feet to it, right?
Yeah, approximately another extra 100.
What was the original, do you remember?
Um, it went to it right about here, and then split between the two.
Just like 200, it's like 200, no?
200?
Double that.
Yeah.
Looking at the building, and the size of the building, and judge it.
Building's having changes, nothing is changing.
No, that's, that's.
Access and detention.
Okay, let me open it up to the audience, do I have anyone in the audience that's, who should make a comment? Now, ask one more time, do I, do I have any comments from the audience? Third time, thanks, do I have any comments from the audience? Okay. Vote numbers.
No, I think I'm good.
Are you also here?
Snow storage, yeah, just one question, yeah, any change to the snow storage?
Well.
Was it the same as it was?
Just about the same as before, we added a lot more, because now we have a large landscape area between the access reps.
And it's all noted.
Good. I just want to make sure, just to.
Motion to close the hearing. I have a motion made, and second, to close the hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say no. Hearing is closed.
All right, thank you.
On, on the 6:40 hearing, I have to open it, and then I'll give you information. Public hearing for city council petition 219, KLP Feckley, request to amend chapter 22 of the revised ordinance entitled zoning article 1, section 22 dash 4 definitions, yacht sale by adding application and permitting requirements for all yacht sales. I got a call this afternoon from Mrs. Feckley, saying that she's had a number of discussions with other city council members, and she's, she's going to be withdrawing her petition. Okay, so, so we need no further action, discussion, I feel, unless somebody had, wants to add something, but she's withdrawing, but I have to bring that information forward.
We do it every weekend, but.
Yes.
It was one, it's like three.
Well, yeah, there's a guy on Main Street that's every weekend, and there's a couple others, you know, there's a guy that.
That's a business.
It's a business.
But that's right.
Do we have to make a motion to close it?
No, no, please. I have, do we think, just a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing.
And motion made, and I have a second?
Second.
Pat, all in favor of closing hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say no. Closed. Call to honor.
Patrick Carla.
Here.
Fred Fredericks.
Yeah.
Paul Reiser.
Here.
Salvatore Chaconi.
Yeah.
John Souza.
Yeah.
Carol Vittorioso.
Here.
Thomas Carrigan.
Here. We have everybody. Minutes of previous meeting. I read them, maybe good to me.
Yep.
All have made a motion to approve the minutes. We have a second?
Marcus, how?
Tom?
Is it?
Okay, just verify that. Any additions, deletions, or corrections?
I wouldn't know.
Hearing, hearing not, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say no. Motion carries. Plan submitted, site plan approved for 320 industrial road.
Here's the cover letter that came through.
Schedule it.
Yep, we have nothing to schedule right now for the first.
Well, we do.
Well, no, not at 6:30.
Not at 6:30, yeah.
But let's try to keep that on the lighter side. I mean, so, so I, so it's a site, site plans, this is a public information meeting.
Yeah.
So, 6:30, I, I move that we schedule it for 6:30 on October 1st.
Same. I have a motion made, and second, from.
You think we're pressing the time on October 1st? I think we made, can we do it at like 7?
Well, that's my, well, oh, I see what you're saying, well, I don't want to, frankly, I don't want to be here.
And if you schedule it for 6:30, we start later, that's fine.
I don't want to.
That's right, I think that's a good time.
Yeah.
Because I don't think.
Okay. I figure we won't be till 7:00 anyway.
That's probably true.
Yeah. At 2:00 first, what time is it?
6:30.
6:30?
Yep.
I have a motion made, and second is, the scheduled site plan approved for 320 industrial road for October 1st at 6:30. Give me an air.
Is it shot on already?
Yeah.
Do we have a photo on that?
Schedule it, go. John, do we have to hold on?
Yeah, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say no, motion carries. Okay, get it to 2:00. You said I had another air note?
This one.
No, there was no in-od.
Oh, no.
That was just a notification, because the director's report was done before the in-od was withdrawn, so it's just a notification.
Okay. Full business.
Okay.
We'll find the revised, revised stuff.
Yeah. Okay.
There we go.
Full business. Modification of site plan approval for research drives.
Shouldn't we first vote that it's a minor modification?
Yeah.
No, I don't think we need to do that, because it's.
Because it's a PRH.
The whole point is that it doesn't have to get scheduled for hearing, but we did schedule it for hearing. The whole point of a minor, to determine if something's going to be minor, or substantial.
Now, minor, you would probably come to us, and we'd, we'd say it's minor, and we pass it down.
It goes beyond the regular intention.
And we set it up for a meeting, so.
Motion to approve with the department head comments, and with the original site plan approvals.
Second. A motion by Sal to approve, with the department head comments.
And the original site plan.
And the original site plan. Any further discussion, additions, or deletions? You're not to call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say no. Carries. New business, oh, that's tab, that's gone.
That's done.
Okay, communications. Discussion, new view joint meeting scheduled for 9:24, 18 at 6:25. I asked, we all got a packet from Chris, and then you should have gotten this today. I looked at that packet, and it was pretty good, the new, the, the new view, and we're going to get a presentation on it on the 24th, it seemed like pretty concise, but then, at the same time, I wanted to be, I couldn't find the information as far as what were the responsibilities of the planning board? Okay, because, you know, we've got to sort of think about that, and how we're going to deal with these things, if this thing is accepted. It's a little bit different than things that we've done in the past, and we'll have to find out what, you know, how we're going to deal with the schedule, and it's probably going to, whoever the new director is, most of the work is going to be there, but, you know, to hit these different points, it'll have to come to a meeting, and we'll have to discuss each point individually, before we make a recommendation to the city council. So, that's why I had him, I want to let Carol read them, if you want.
Yeah.
Keep her at that, than I am, just to go through, just a brief, on the seven different points that we have to deal with.
Let me just pull up, yeah, just do the headers.
So, these?
Yes.
So, the, so the pilot program, so it's the liabilities to assets is a pilot program from the Department of Housing and Community Development, created to help communities stabilize neighborhoods by redeveloping deteriorated properties that are considered The program will support the purchase and rehabilitation of primarily one and two family properties that have been vacant for at least three years of the time of the development, and have a negative impact on the surrounding neighborhood. It's, the program is targeted to one and two family houses that can be acquired, renovated, and sold to other, to, sold to owner occupants. The five communities have created a partnership with the Department of Housing and Community Development, and New View communities to participate, and those are Athol, Clinton, Fitchburg, Gardner, and Lemonster. The New View liability to assets board, because they'll be a board of directors, will only approve a property for redevelopment if the participating municipal representative where the property is located has recommended it. This is a three-to-five-year program. The program uses chapter 121A of the Mass General laws to create a new corporation, which permits New View, with permission from Housing and Community Development, to take vacant properties by eminent domain. Chapter 121A, section 6A, authorizes the exemption of 128 developments from real and personal property taxes, and special, betterments, and special assessments. Properties cannot be added to the New View LTA application that was transmitted to each municipality on August 14th, 2018. If a municipality did want to add property, a revised application would have to be submitted, and properties can be taken off the list by written notification to Housing and Community Development. So, those are both ways, so I'm assuming we'll discuss those, and the, and the properties that we have in question on September 24th, next Monday.
And next Monday, so we talked about the blighted areas, and the definitions.
State.
We have to look at, the project is not, in the convention of any zoning subdivisions, health of building ordinances, so we're going to look at the, at the building, if they meet the current bylaws. The project does not conflict with city master plan, okay? The project is not detrimental to the public city or town. Project is consistent with development for that area, so if they get a project that it's going to meet in that area. Project will constitute a public use of benefit, so there'll be a benefit to what they're, that they're doing, and a method of relocation. And I'm not sure, this is one that I'm really not, you know, getting involved with locating people, so I'm not sure why that's in the, the planning board curfew, and then, that sometimes is going to have to be discussed, okay? Of things, but, so this, this here is primary, the draft of the write-up of the things that we're going to be responsible for, for looking at. So, it seems like a good project on the scope, and we'll, we'll find out more on the, on the 24th.
Good.
Okay, anybody got any questions, or anything they want to add to that?
It's a good project.
That, that, yes. Covenant, the bond release, and that's farm, definitive subdivision.
Good evening.
Evening, evening.
Long time ago, sir.
Yeah, been a while.
Get out of my way. My name's Mark Corgan, I'm the applicant, I'm the developer of Nass Farm subdivision, Nass Farm Road is what it's called. We're done, short version, got a couple houses that we're finishing off, but the road is done, it's stabilized, the city's been out to look at it, it's all top loaded files, sidewalks, blah, blah, blah. So, this is the last part of the process, is get the covenant released, and I guess that's up.
Okay, the covenant, and, and the process, as, as I say, is no problem, we can, you've got all the work done, and the DPW has said that the work is done, and all that, okay? And, you know, all, it's all done, except for the paperwork, okay? The last thing that we have to do is, we can release the bond, release that, and, but what I need is as-built drawings, okay, at the final requirement, and, and the, as-built drawings, and then, once you get your as-built drawings, and we accept that, okay, the next thing that you have to do, is you have to then petition the city council for the road to be accepted, okay? We can't require the city council to accept the road, all we can do is require you, is to write a petition to the city council, and get it officially stamped, okay? At that point, we can release the bond, and release the package, so we can do it, you know, there's a number of ways, and you can, you can choose that we do it, you can talk to the DPW, and get a value from them, on what it would cost for the final paperwork, you might say, okay, the as-built drawings.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, Thomas Mulaney, I represent.
Okay.
We already have the as-built plans, the plans are already done, those were already inspected by DPW.
Letter from the DPW anywhere, does anybody know?
Tom, you know what they said? I thought they did, I would, I.
I don't know, they.
Yeah, I haven't seen. I started all this by sending, sending over a request for a release, and it turned out that we've been through.
Look at your face, I wish I had.
Two directors and an interim director since then, so that, that's why the, the procedure was something we didn't recall exactly how it was done before, so I sent over the same release as when we got the base coat.
What we've done, what typically happens is, typically, somebody gets down to the last house or two, and at that point, they haven't done the base coat, but they haven't done the top coat, they haven't done the sidewalks, they haven't done the street trace, okay? So, at that point, we put a bond on it, so we release the covenant, put a bond, and then, and that requirement is, it also is the as-built drawings. Now, you say your as-built drawings are done, so all I need, from the DPW, okay, is a letter from them saying that they have received the as-built drawings, that they are, they are done correctly, and at that point.
Or everything.
Yeah, but everything's, not all the as-built, okay.
My understanding is that the director already has all that, and that, I, I believed that it was supposed to be included in your packets for this evening, I hadn't seen the documents, but I was told that that was.
We haven't seen anything.
I haven't seen it, I haven't seen that.
So, you know, they may say, oh, you know, you forgot to do this, and it's going to be $3,000 to finish it, you know, so you have to pay $3,000, right, or whatever it is.
I walked the subdivision man down with John Roseberry, he's the one that sent out the advocate on the ground, and he agreed that everything was up to snuff, they have planned, I know what you're going to say, but you don't have a piece of tape for that.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I thought that that was generated by them.
They did, they, they did say that the, that the, let's say, the physical stuff is done, okay, the roads, the side, everything is done, and it's, we got that letter.
Oh, you did, okay.
Yeah, but, but it's the last step, the as-built drawings.
Which they do have as well.
But they didn't, in the letter I got, we got a second note from them saying that didn't have it.
And they didn't have the as-built.
Yeah, it's not.
A long ago, it's.
This week.
This week?
Yeah.
We haven't seen anything.
So, I, we haven't seen it here in the office, so I think, like I said, just, it's going to be, you know, what we'll do is request that from the DPW, and then, you can go down to the, tomorrow, I guess, if you, if everything is done, you can go to the city clerk, and write up a petition for your street to be accepted, okay?
Does he have to wait for the street?
No, 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 you can't, see that, see, that's what the law is interesting, is we can require them to go to the, to them to stop the process, but I can't make it, the state law says.
As long as he's.
I can't ma, as long as you've done your job, I can't require the city.
And that's, that's where, we just don't want to get stuck here, get somebody waiting to move into one of these houses right now.
No, I agree, no, I want to move it along.
So, if we, if we get the plans in, so you have the letter from the DPW saying it's all set, so you just need a set of the.
As-built drawings.
Okay.
Well, they could have them, if, if you gave them to them, and they say they have them.
I thought they already had them, was my understanding, because I, I've got a, I've got a set in the mylaws. Apparently, everybody's got a set, except for me and you.
Can we do this conditional?
Well, we have to sign the mylaws.
We have to sign it.
I can have the mylaws over here in five minutes, if you want to wait, I, I've got them at my office.
Just do that.
Want me to go get them? I'll be back momentarily.
Yeah, you get them, yeah, go get them.
Yeah, another two hours. No, no, we're, yeah, we'll make it conditional on anything the DPW comes up with, and a dollar a month, and you just post a bond.
Right.
Real bond, real bond.
Is that your motion, second?
7:03, he said five minutes.
Because we ain't going down the stairs.
You're like the last thing on our agenda, so we might be gone.
He's an old guy.
Are we out of the last thing?
I think we have.
One more thing, it's early.
No, we.
Yeah.
Was there a motion?
We have two more things, yeah, that was the motion.
I made the motion.
Can you repeat?
No, we gotta wait for the.
That we make a conditional approval for release of, uh, the covenant, um, as long as the D P W sends a letter of verification of all the work being completed, and if anything hasn't been completed.
Covenant.
And to put the dollar value on it.
But we haven't seen it.
We haven't seen it.
I haven't seen it, so.
There's nothing in the packets about this at all.
Steph, you got that? And, and if there's anything left over, and they'll have to post a bond for whatever remaining.
I can just tell you.
Can't do that.
Second.
Gotta have a dollar number.
But he may not have it all in them.
I, I.
There is a.
I don't.
Yeah.
There is a dollar.
Oh, we don't know.
It sounds like everything's done.
Yeah, it's done.
Yeah, so, so we're making a conditional on that letter, and then once the letter's here?
We have a.
Sign a mylaw.
So you, we, you show on a letter, you already have.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's.
The issue is lack of planning director is the issue, so.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's right.
That brings us to the motion point on the agenda.
Motion made, seconded, much, don't worry about the letter.
Well, no, you'll get it.
He said as-bills were on it, so.
The as-bills are gonna come in. The as-bills come in, we sign off on the, and I got them in hand, then we can give them final approval.
We have.
And with receipt, upon receipt of the D P W, no, upon receipt of the documentation from the city clerk.
A petition.
A petition for speed.
That is correct.
Is this stopping your occupancy permit?
It could.
You have something to move in.
Yeah, 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 uh, I, I'm not like, you know, I need this tomorrow. Hey, I'm not that stupid, but, uh, no, but yeah, it's, it's, the sequence of operations here.
Do it the right way, get a conditional and get them out, sign them out.
Yeah.
That was the only.
I said that about two minutes.
Well, we gotta wait for, everyone.
He said five minutes.
Well, why can't we, why can't we vote and go move on? We signed mylaw.
Well, yeah, we don't have anything else.
It's, it's, it's.
Okay, one vote, we'll do it, but that, yeah. All in favor of Sal's motion say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Okay, now we gotta wait until.
All right, so.
It's all right, we got a few minutes.
All right, yeah, we, I guess we don't have anything else.
We do. Six point three.
Six point three. Oh, yeah, that is something we need to talk about.
We're not under the communications. Nope.
Because.
Interviews.
Yeah, so were the interviews gonna be October first before break room?
Correct.
We have three.
And I still believe it should, you know, shouldn't have been at the, whoever came up first said that, it was a good covenant, to do it before we go into the regular.
Yes. Yes, so the mayor can be, I mean, it's open to the public, and if the mayor wants to be here, is there a right to be, so at five o'clock, the first one is October first at five o'clock.
Correct.
But didn't we pick the three?
Yes, they're, they're in here.
We picked a three.
We picked three.
Are we all gonna be?
Yes, it has to be, it has to be done under, it, it, pursuant to the open meeting.
I have one question. You know, a lot of the questions, well, the questions that are in the, that were in the handout are the questions we asked during the first interview. Now, some of them probably still could be valid, you know, for, for all, for everyone to hear, but I would think that we should maybe think about a couple other questions.
I, I agree. I think we should, and I think, I don't really, I.
Some of these questions are kinda nebulous.
I think what we should do is, um.
We've got three weeks.
My suggestion is, is that we submit them, don't submit them to everybody, just submit them to Stephanie.
And she can submit them to Wendy to write them.
I submit them, the, the questions that you wanna ask, and then just make sure you ask the same questions among, to, to three years.
Well, she, Wendy's gonna have to give us a mass, the list of the questions, but, you know, you should also take a look at the questions that are in your packet.
Take a look.
Say, are these valid questions we should ask, cause to me, some of them aren't valid at all, all right?
So that's how I understand.
What I wanna do is ask you to take and look at the list, okay?
Say we.
Take it. If you, there, you have other questions you'd like, okay, that they be sent to, to Wendy. Not copy all.
Right.
Or send the stuff to send to Wendy.
Okay, because, not, the copy all would be open meeting.
Right.
Okay, we can't.
We're not really deliberating anything, but.
We're not deliberating, but you're passing, you're passing on the information.
If you think some should be deleted.
Can I ask a question?
Make a notation of that as well.
So if I understand what Carol just said, we're gonna ask the same questions of each to the three candidates.
We're gonna try, that's correct.
We're gonna try, or we're going to ask the same?
Yeah, we'll go, we intend to.
Well, my, my, but sometimes you get two or three questions answered with the same question.
So that said, we should have a, a reasonable question.
Correct. No, I say we come up with three of our, if you don't have to come up with any, you can just go on whatever the boilerplate is, but come up with no more than three. Yeah.
Can, can you guys?
A lot of questions.
Stephanie, person, what are you looking at?
No, no, let's just, one question per member.
Tell.
All right, one question per member, because we have a half hour per candidate.
And you oughta wanna have some time for them to ask questions too, right?
Correct.
I used to think that might be ambitious, one question.
I, I do, but there's gonna be duplication.
That's a question I'd really ask.
There may be duplication.
The thing is, but the thing is, you know, my, my issue with these is always, we can ask, we ask the same questions to each candidate, but sometimes there's something specific in their C V. that I might wanna ask.
Sure, sure.
That's not gonna apply to you.
Right.
If it's a lead-in from a question that you ask and a response, you can, you can dive a little deeper.
Right.
Okay, so if somebody mentions something, you can relate a sub-question to that, because you're still asking the same major question.
So you want.
It, it isn't right, Carol, the way this is done. That's my firm belief, it, it shouldn't be, you know, because everybody's, has different backgrounds, will go to different places.
So you want us each to send one question to Wendy?
Can you send directly to Wendy, and I'll let her know that they're coming in, cause if she has.
Yeah.
Well, we, we.
Yes, you have to.
It's gotta, it's gotta be beyond some way.
Where is he? It's, it's, they get a half hour.
He's in the red.
He's not living up to his end in pride.
He's in the red.
Cause I'm sick of listening to these guys now about this.
Why?
I thought it was a car.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Yeah, Wendy's, Stephanie's got a sweat.
Stop. It's, um, fifty-four Main Street. He's, he's close, but he's not making five minutes.
He's sweating, he's lost. Told you, can't get down the stairs in five minutes.
That's what I mean. If he makes it that.
It's like, it was bad, it was seven and a half.
Not showing the foot speed of my youth.
That's what we just said.
Actually, pretty good. Eight minutes. Okay, so I have a mylaw and a copy of each of these. You wanna take a minute off?
Yeah, I'm not, I'd be good too.
I did bring the street acceptance plan as well, and that's for our, some over the course.
Yeah.
Well, you did, so you already submitted.
No, no, I have it in.
You have the one, okay.
Yeah. I didn't know if I'd survive our second trip back.
You, you're lucky, you made this one.
Who's your mind?
Everybody got. Stephanie will have to find out.
I have.
In the box, it should be a black one. Okay.
We actually wrote some red on mine.
Uh, okay, is that it for the agenda?
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
No, 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 no.
Why? We signed mylaw.
The side of my laws.
After sacked all the time, motion to adjourn.
And we're not doing these again.
Okay, all you gotta do is.
Petitions and bring you in. Which one, which one's on?
Back to us.
Those are the two, right? What is the water line and what is the, uh, the actual street layout?
Street layout.
Those need.
Just, those guy knows.
We've got little lines.
And then, and then.
Any lines for?
We've got little lines, so we saw, we're like, you have to treat us like we're in second grade. We need like the lines.
Okay.
We, you got a rule, or I'll give you lines?
Do it right here.
Right here?
Do it right there on the next one.
It doesn't matter to you?
John, should we close the first, do we?
Yeah, uh, motion is, uh, to close the meeting.
No.
Motion.